I am saying. In the Republic of the United States, one nation under God, indivisible, with the great justice for all.
Father in heaven, thank you for this time that you would allow us to come together in union. God, we ask for your perfect will to be down tonight, to believe you hold our people in control.
Counselor Howard.
Here.
Counselor Lorenz.
Here.
Counselor Watson.
Here.
Mayor Protem Segola.
Here.
Mayor Becker.
Here.
A quorum is declared.
Um, do you have any modifications to the agenda?
Yes, sir. We do have several modifications to the agenda this evening. We would like to add L two. The Federal Aviation Administration. Grant approval. And then we would like to remove N two under staff reports, kids connection. And N four under staff reports for planning.
Okay, so the group modification, second one. Then do you need a second, just bring the modifications to the agenda, is there any discussion? You need a?
Counselor Howard.
Yes.
Counselor Lorenz.
Yes.
Counselor Watson.
Our.
Mayor Protem Segola.
Right.
Mayor Becker.
All right.
Motion carries to modify the agenda, adding L two. The FAA grant approval and removing N two and N four from the staff report.
Approval of consent agenda minutes regularly meeting from May second, twenty twenty four. Review and approval of accounts payable. Go to approve the consent agenda. Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda, the minutes regularly meeting from May second, twenty twenty four. Review and approval of accounts payable. Is there any more discussion? You need a?
Counselor Howard.
Yes.
Counselor Lorenz.
Yes.
Counselor Watson.
All right.
Mayor Protem Segola.
Right.
Mayor Becker.
All right.
Motion carries to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, we have no confirmation or communication for the participants. We will have the. So some comments and special presentations. City Council, welcome to your schedule of comments. Please load your comments to three minutes. And Council will not take action at the same meeting.
Hello, everyone. My name is Benny Kitana. And I'm from the Rowan Leaf Car and Bike Club. And we are looking for sponsors for our car show. Uh, that we do every year for Father's Day. This is our thirtieth year. And so, but we need sponsors now to keep it going. So that's why I'm here. Um. On that, there, there is what we do for our, the, the whole valley. I mean, it's not just. The show is around also that we do a lot of different things for the, the valley. And we do have a lot of people that come into the different areas from every side of the valley, the valley that come in to this part.
You know, the, the car show is pretty big. And the people in from that state.
Yeah, we do have a lot of out of state here. Um. The, what it costs to put in, to do our car show are. Is right around twelve thousand dollars by the time. Get it all back. So that's why we have, we had a lot of sponsors. But I'm widening the search to try and get more people involved into the, the car show.
So, um, you can. Definitely take it into consideration.
Okay.
Not that we can maybe do a certain amount of TV.
Okay.
Uh, you can definitely have a discussion and see.
Okay. And, um. Our phone numbers are on their address. Everything is on the, the cards and on the left. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'll follow up.
What's up?
I'll, I will follow up.
Okay. Longer? I hope this is one of the opportunities to talk after y'all have the presentation on the railroad. That's why I sent that here.
So.
My name is Luke Ford. I represent. Do you have any on the title?
No, not yet.
No, wait, that was a theory.
Yeah, yeah. So, so Luke, but Luke wants to make a comment, under citizens' comments on a different subject. So now come to that.
Well, there's different type, uh, number. I came on behalf of the Modestic Golf Course as well, uh, Bob Gill and the rest of the board asked me to come and drop off just a couple of closers. Our designs for, uh, the new golf course building that's gonna be going up. Um. My wife runs the pro shop over there and. So I was just holding my baby before I left and he was like, hey, if you're going over there, take these with you. Um, it is a great project, obviously. Golf course benefits the community in a lot of ways. We don't have to get into all of that this evening, but if anybody would like to take a look at some of those. Designs of that building that's, um. Gonna be constructed here, hopefully within the next year, it's time for them, they're more than welcome to and. I know the golf course, uh, appreciates the support that the city of Modestia and the community, um, gives it. So. Thank you to that. You'll probably back to talk about it.
Luke, Luke, I have a question. Luke, come back. And you had something to say about Jim the seventh?
Oh, yes. She's, she, she takes everybody in one. Very much. Uh, so June the seventh, there is a community dinner. It is a fundraiser. They're doing a silent auction and a community dinner over at the Sky High Facility. They've, uh, the golf course board is working, work really hard, uh, to get a lot of donations and different things for the silent auctions. And all of the proceeds of that do go to the construction of this building. I know the city's been, um. Very supportive when it comes to the construction and has done everything that they can. Uh, so help the golf course with that, but the meal will be paid by Mountain View Restaurant. Uh, the tickets, like dinner tickets for fifteen dollars a piece. Uh, there is a registration link and I know that. That has been circulating, um, but if anybody had. Wanted to try and find out, I know it's on the golf courses Facebook page as well. Uh. So. June seventh, keep an eye out for that. If nothing else, have a great deal. I know. Everybody loves Mountain View. I do definitely do. So anytime I see cars in there, okay, let's go ahead and go there. So. It'll be a great, be a good time, no matter what, but. I think that's the last thing, right?
Yes.
Thank you guys.
Pay no attention to the woman behind the curtain. Since just someone's about, I don't know if I'll say if you're not. I know what. Was about. All right. Any other citizens for public comment? Then we will move into the public media schedule, the scheduled parents. And that is a public meeting for closure of railroad crossings at Highway one sixty and Fairday, Highway one sixty in the branch. So at this time. It's just a meeting, so we don't have to be.
So I would start with, with Rob. And then I would call on Luke. And then, um, you can go to your list. And. Get some background.
Good evening, Council. Um. Tonight, we're having a, a public meeting to talk about the potential closure of two streets within Mona Vista. Uh, Franklin there, one sixty and then Fairday and one sixty. Last year, the railroad approached us after the new owners took over, um, and. Asked us if we would consider closing a few of our crossings. Um, they said that for their insurance needs, they needed to, um. Do some closures and they would like us to pick, you know, a couple. They had four initially that they wanted us to look at. Um, we did do some looks at those. We picked, um, the four that they gave us. We had traffic studies done on them. And of those traffic studies. The two that are on tonight were the two lowest volume traffic counts. Um, I then took it to our, um, emergency services, our police department, our ambulance service and our fire department. Um, they each reviewed that and came back with comments that they were fine. If we were to close those two, most of their, their areas, they can get to either from Sixth Avenue. Or from a different area. So. Each of those closures would require citizens to move one block either east or west, depending on where they are. Um, to access Highway one six. Um. So I'll let their, Luke with the railroad kind of talk about where they are with the railroad. Um, we had discussed it and we felt that those were the two least. Impactful intersections that were proposed before. Um, they wanted, um, Lyle with the school traffic coming in and out of there. We did not feel that that was a good one. And then they also talked over there towards, um, their patterns. And we definitely didn't feel that was good. That's one that we felt that they needed to do some improvements on and we're working with them. Um, one of the things that they're. Proposing in this thing is we pay to the railroad, um, a monthly fee. For Montez Park and for the right of way for that park. Um, that is equivalent to roughly five hundred dollars. It's under, it's four eight seven a month. That we pay for that lease. And then over at Full and wider, we also pay yearly of five hundred dollars to keep that, um, on there. And one of their things that they, they, their enticements were if we were to close two, they would remove those ongoing fees that the city's been paying. So, um, they have also claimed that they would be more than willing to do all the work to make those areas closed. Um, and close those streets off to our, our specifications and either return it. To native ground or help us get it created. So like there at, um, Franklin, we proposed a parking lot area. To better assess, um, the skate park and the rest of Montez Park. Um, and then Faraday is a dirt road, so, um, it has limited traffic. There are. Two, three houses on that, um, stretch of road. And that's all that's there. Um. Franklin has a lot more traffic. Um, but it's. Like I said, it's the least of the, the four that we assume. But then I'll kind of do a few questions. Does the council have any?
So Council, obviously the railroad and the first city of Modestia with this, um. Request, the biggest thing in our eyes, no matter what, is obviously not inconvenience of. The travelers without city of Modestia, um. But it's the safety of everyone from, you know, the elderly population to our youngest population. And given the fact that there are so many crossings in continuation there within that. Say three quarter miles for that, um. We deemed it probably the best to go ahead and try, uh, obviously the. The council's approval to get those, uh, closed off so that. Not only would it create, uh, a safer environment, but a potential framework for the city as well. Kind of like Rob had mentioned, uh, that street, I believe it's Franklin right there in between, kind of the, right by the skate park. Um, that addition of additional parking and potential use of that kind of grassland park right there. Uh, there to the east side of it, potentially, you know, it could be. Anything else that the city deemed that they wanted to do with that area that could be beneficial for the community. Um. Obviously that, then, uh, crossing there east of that. We did, we asked, what is the lowest traffic volume of these? Um. And Rob kind of alluded to the fact that, yes, it's an insurance deal on our side, but. We'd happily pay the insurance premiums every month. It's not that, it's the safety of people going back and forth over those processes. And our trains are. You know, if anybody's around the city, uh, they see that it can have overly long, most of the time, it's not. A stupendous inconvenience for most people. They see the frame and. Try and rush across beforehand. If you, you know, if anybody waited about a minute, we'd be down and through there. But, um, doing studies on our own with our engineers and conductors. The amount of cars that are trying to buzz through those roads to beat the train. And I get it, I thought we. First on, on comments or things, all that often, five percent trying to deal where you're going. Easily as possible and as fast as possible, but we just want to eliminate some of that, uh, liability. Not concerned for safety issues in those areas. Um. Like we mentioned. Could be utilized for different things. Um, something that we improve as well is that we have been wanting to. Upgrade and, you know, revitalize some of the other processes in town, Adams being one of them. And so we have been working with BG and BJ and Rob on a plan to get those revitalized and. We really hope to move forward with that this summer. Uh, there's a larger grant program that we're looking to do. Route in Southern Valley on a lot of the crossings. Um. But so far as wearing car on vehicles and the inconvenience, the frustration of going over bumps and maybe spilling a coffee on the way to work. That is something that we, we do look to want to address. And this is a, uh, it's a significant help to us to be able to have these others closed and be able to. Funnel money properly into the others that need some work. So. That's our deal is that we are really looking at the safety of the community is the biggest thing, especially around the park areas. Uh, where you do have, especially summertime, uh, travel traffic. And then the community includes kids and adults as well that are utilizing those parks. We just don't want there to ever be any issues. So. That's really what I have to say. I'd do the same as Rob. If anybody have questions, I don't know if they'd be directed at me or at council, but. Um, I'm happy to try and answer anything if anybody has questions, but.
So, so what are the consequences are there besides you, you frame and closing the world with generally where you think would people go?
So off the top of my head, it is what Franklin to then, I think to the east is what Stallow.
And yes, so.
To Stallow and then to the west would then be over closer to the CPAC building by Safeway. Is that correct? I've lived here for four years and I still don't know all the street names unfortunately, but.
Same way.
Um. But that is the thing. That's what kind of Rob will do is that. It is a, you know, potential minor inconvenience for some folks to live on that street. And we understand that. And we're not looking to take anything away, um, from any individual or the community. It's more just looking at the overall safety aspects. Um, when those trains come through there, we, um. Probably to many people, but we do have the right of way through there. And that ability to travel across railroad tracks is, um. Is a benefit to the community. And so we want to do the best by the community by. Closing potential crossings that would have the least traffic. But we do understand that it would be, you know. A change in your route to work or route to take children to school or to go to Safeway or whatever it looks like for those to have to go up one street or down another. Personally, if I lived on those streets, I would like not having as much traffic down my road every day. You know, that's a benefit kind of living outside of town and kind of more of the rural. Parts of, uh, Rio Grande County, but. That's a personal opinion, so.
Do you even know if there's ever been events on any of those crossings?
Uh, to be honest, we have to look at some pretty historical data. Thank goodness, there has not been. Major accidents that have happened in the recent history. Um. It is one of those things where you. Just don't want it to take the chance. Like one would almost be too many if we can do something to avoid it. The accidents and issues that we ever face are typically with larger. Trucks with trailers, campers, um, semi trucks, different things like that. That obviously is not typical traffic on those crossings. Uh, it was more just our internal investigations that we did where we took a look at how many. Cars were making what we would call close calls, trying to beat the train across these crossings and. Unfortunately, it's not a perfect system where it's a smooth road you're able to get over and depending on the car and different things, there's hangups, you slow down. Um. Just on that internal investigation, we just. Decided that it would probably be in the community's interest and in our own to attempt to. Close off a couple of those, but then utilize them for a community, I would say.
So Luke, what about the property between Stallow and.
Would that lead into the east?
Yeah, so, yeah. So the barrels are still, yeah, from about Sonic back to that building. Wasland.
Is that something that you guys would be interested in trying to do something with, have vendors there? I assume different things in the summertime possibility, understood? I think that would be something that we'd be open to consideration on. Um. Like I've said, it's the biggest thing is a liability issue when you do have. Trains moving at. Like tremendous weight and obviously we maintain slow speeds through populated areas, but. The weight of those trains, when you get them moving, it's hard to get them stopped. And so batteries.
Yeah.
That would be something that we would be happily open to, um, especially as. Part of this deal. When it came to that for the closures, for vendors, for different folks. We typically do not operate as our current operation. Dictates on weekends. And so that could be something to where if that area is utilized and weekends, that could possibly be the, 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 the cities, but having. Different shows, but. Safety trucks or different, that's something you guys were interested in.
I don't like that at all. It just, people park there all the time. So it'd be just a. Just a thought. Rob, you said that, that you guys did traffic studies in there? Did you guys do counters or what? Yeah, we kind of contracted with, uh, Rio Grande, um, Road and Bridge Department. We were doing all the counts last year over on Morris and then on, um, Newcombe. We asked them to come over and test, do those for. Um, for a weekend at a time. So we had that thing. And BBA also has some of that that came from the, the program that they, they do in that's. Funny. So, um, those young reserves, very consistent. So. I'm making it the longer, I'm not saying that it's not an interesting issue. But it's the least amount of traffic and put some science behind decision making as well. Um, I was just asking you that she had the ability to pull up Google Earth or. The sister websites and we could talk specifically about. Build intersections on, on the screen. Um, but. For Franklin, that's. If you go west, you would have to go down to Jackson from either third. Or fourth pit Jackson and then come up around the I call malfunction junction there by Safeway. And, and access one sixty from there. On the other side, you would go from Franklin, one block over to Lyle and you would have access to one sixty. On Faraday, there is no. Eastern edge of the road, um, until you get to South Henderson. Um, so you have to take six down to South Henderson and access one sixty. And then you have to come back, um, two other roads in order to get to the Stallow to come back. So it's one block in their directions. From Faraday is one block west. And then differently Franklin is one block east to access, uh, you can hire. Yeah, we've just, from our, you know, experience with March Elementary being directly across the street. Um, we have in, in the, during the school years, you have parents that are queuing on that side of Lyle. Um, trying to get across the. So that was one of the decision factors. You didn't want to create more body activity, whatever you currently exist. You may have some questions for these two. I'm just curious about. If we looked in for a finding of that if it, uh, happened. Would there have to be like another traffic study for, for lights, like traffic lights, signals in some of those intersections? None of our streets warrant any type of the traffic light. And as the railroad crossings are, they're not. They don't have the gates. They don't have any gates. So they're unprotected, um, crossings. So any car, um, and you guys had asked earlier about accidents. We haven't had any accidents in those streets. There's gonna be a couple of near misses, but there, um, in Full and wider park. We had internal truck and trailers on my parks vehicles. Got wedged, we got hit, um, by a train there. One of our summer help, that, that happened to him. And then directly across over on Jefferson, we had a semi trailer. It hit by a, um. So accidents do happen. We've been fortunate enough that we haven't had any on those two there. Um, Jefferson's a much harder one to try to close. And likewise, there at Full and wider, um, I think that's still a, the, the discussion, maybe close that road, but to have an excess on wider park. Because there really is no good turnaround on that little access road that goes in. And that ends up the depot there. So. It's hard to get an accurate measurement on accidents too, because they see so little of travel. Right. You know, it's like. It just hadn't happened yet, but those are blind intersections too, coming from the north, south, nuclear streams. Right. So if they're not paying really good attention, you might just not even see it. So, and it does give, you know, especially the one there in Franklin, it gives the city a lot of opportunities to. Either extend a park or create another park in the line, you know, um, there's some things we can do with it. So it does do that. Faraday was kind of omniscient because it doesn't have a lot of. And then two, it's not an improved street. It's not paved, it's dirt. So once you get to the railroad tracks, the pavement stops and then from there to Sixth Avenue, it is.
So this is Faraday.
Yes. And you can see. Things, non-protected, um, thing, everything goes south of the railroad tracks is dirt. There is directly. On a hundred feet. South, there's an access road that's. That continues on. So the building really impacted more than this one block. There's no impacts more than one block. And that building is no longer a car dealership, right? Or he's no longer, so we don't have to worry about him not getting highway travel and stuff like that. You know. That building is made here. Okay. It seems like good plan, but I live on the streets, so I guess what it does is that. If you go to the east.
This is Franklin.
Franklin. And that's, um, six.
Nope, sorry.
And. This is Franklin's intersection. It's this old picture. That's when the street partnership was being built.
Wow.
Um, but there is a dirt access road that connects. Franklin over to Lyle Street right there. So, and that stays open, that stays open. Montez continues, it would be a. Montez continues, it would be if you look at the screen on your left there, that's that's part of Montez and right before the highway.
So for us, it wouldn't
Please state your name for the record.
Tina Harper. So for the police department, we wouldn't affect us, and we just have to start a new block before or a block after to get to kind of
They entered most of them, but then they brought it up by their ideas, which keeps talking about safety. Uh and you all address that. But if you go on east on one sixty, where you cross the railroad track. I don't know how many, because I live out east. I don't know how many times I've had tourists almost hit me head on, trying to get into Delta. So if we're talking about safety, of some railroad tracks. We need to change that intersection where you go to Delta so that you don't detract from them and their business. What if we took a part of the park, both Franklin and made a port lane across the crossing there where the gates are? So they have a turn lane. Because inevitably I almost hit one lady and hit me head on, because she was in the westbound lane going east. Now, according to what I've said here and listened, and I'm trying to make sure I understand, the city will save roughly sixty-five hundred a year. In doing the trade-out. That correct? Okay, this railroad is going to save money. For your insurance, correct? Okay, which is a benefit, because the more we can save the railroad. Because the revenue revenue is limited, and the freight out of this valley, and we don't want losing. But the other thing was the safety issue. So if we could do some trading, they Franklin moved the park back a little bit and widen that, so you can actually add a turn lane. Rather than, Rachel and I was going to come see Gigi about making it where you couldn't repair left into Delta, but that would kill their business. And we have to be prudent as people to keep our businesses solid. Anyway, so that's, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I maybe address that for you? We haven't done that, but that's a really good idea. Um we could approach C D A. If we would go back a little bit later, to the east. Um right there, if you'll just pan to your right. Um that area is really large. We could approach C D A to see if they would be willing to re-strike that, there's enough asphalt there that we could probably get a turn lane in there and do a little what they call a twiddle. Um and and actually get a left-hand turn lane going east that might actually alleviate that and and be relatively cost-effective. And we can talk to C D A, I think it's next week or the week after. Is a T P R, so I could bring that up to the T P R, that's our our region, our planning region for region five C D A. Um we could bring that up to and see what C D A people say, because we'll have all all the program during angle there, and like I said, I think it's
Yeah, it's next Thursday.
Yeah, that's why I said, there's plenty of asphalt there, we'd have to kind of work with striking a little bit, and then since that area of the park is cities. I I I think at least from a C D A standpoint, because it's not our jurisdiction. Right now, there's some grants in there. So that would be some of the things, and so you can sort of That's a really good idea, we can take that.
And that's something that can be done without any real
Uh yes, I I mean, the railroad um would eventually, because I'm not exactly sure how far at that crossing where there he's meant is with C D A. Um but there would have to be some some discussion there to make sure that all parties are are good. They just replaced that crossing, I think it was two years ago. So that crossing is fairly new, and it's got the concrete abutments, so it should be good for a fairly long time, but like I said, I I I almost think um we could probably do that and and accommodate and left turn lane in there without doing a whole lot on the asphalt side. So that'd be great. You're there on that crossing, if you could move a bit farther west.
Hey, my name's Don Nolan. He's talking about the crossing the seat I put in a couple of years ago, and he never finished it actually. If you look at that the shoulder, road, the paper comes in like this. You know, somebody driving over there to drop off.
They've got some concrete, those abutments sitting there at that crossing right now. I don't know what the plan is, we'd rather talk about that, but on that west side, there's some abutments right there.
They should extend that just a little bit more so that there's, you don't have that
And that's right there at the turner going into Fullwater Park.
And then I guess other comments of on the closures. Probably because the low traffic is not a big deal, but with their V A D signage warning people ahead that if you're going to take Faraday, that you need to turn some style or something.
Yeah, you might have to have at least a dead inside or something. We only have dead insigns and then there at the railroad crossing on both sides of it, we would have the type three barricades. The three bars with the stripes that in, um those would be on either side, sorry.
I'm just saying, warn people ahead, so that they can take the turns that if want to get there, they find out they have to go
Sure.
Up beyond.
And and that's what we want to do, we want to make sure we sign this and and make sure the public understands, and yes, we can put advanced workers there. So that's another, that's my explanation.
As far as safety, you're probably still going to have the pedestrian traffic crossing.
Thank you. Randy?
Thank you, uh Randy Martinez, I live at four one style, we're sixteen forty four. Uh appreciate the call, the everything he does, I know he's a big issue, so. Uh my other question was really is uh the traffic studies of uh the older capital towns. With lived there all my life and being part of the city for twenty years, as a different part of the position with the city. Um seven street has already gotten more traffic on because of the development on Sixth Street. And so I added traffic to that, uh right now, I mentioned that the the crossing that Adam Street is pretty vast, which it is, uh the one in Stowe is also uh fairly fairly vast. Um no one who was ever been on that since I was a public director about fifteen years ago, so um that's getting pretty beat up. And uh I just wanted if you have been a lot using lines to fix crossings that were near one of where they are. Did that have not been improved at all, like I said, the last time we did it without the railroad's permission, because they were, they were like, we put some asphalt in there.
So as I kind of alluded to during my um couple minutes to talk, we are working on some grant applications for crossing improvements across the San Luis Valley. The biggest thing is that uh the biggest thing, it talks with City of Mont Vista. Um we were almost looking at a like two for two trade, uh so far as doing work on other crossings. And similarly, I think the city, to my knowledge, assessed that Adam Street and Sequea were two of the worst ones that needed work done. Following that, those initial talks with the city, um we've been working with the Alamosa County, kind of doing the same thing, because if anybody travels over there to Airport Road the one of six and different roads over there definitely needs some work as well, we found a very cost-effective way to improve these crossings, uh something small that not a lot of the community knows is that it's almost a fifty fifty split when it comes to uh the municipality or the county and the railroad fixing these crosses. Um that fifty fifty split is, you know, it's material and labor and equipment that all have to go into this, and that's something that we have in working with the city to um come come to an agreement on, and the best case scenario for fixing a lot of crossings through town. I know obviously even going down Stowe to um visit my friends, I I see that crossing needs work, and there are quite a few, and I think it's one of those things where the ones that you cross are always the ones on your mind, like the same way I if I cross one every single day, I'd say, oh, that's the worst one. Because it's the one I cross every day, um but I would agree that the majority of the crossings in the city of Mont Vista need work, and so I do not believe that that was one of the initial ones that we were going to take a look at so far as replacing, but if that's something that we as a railroad and I think a city can try and help with, we would be happy to take a look at it, especially if it hasn't been, if it's been neglected for so long, and it honestly made me laugh, I mean, so without the railroad's permission, the previous ownership and multiple previous ownerships, they were never going to care.
That is, if he has a hard time working with the railroad and the state, I would be excited, so.
And that is a task that I would not want to be faced with, to be honest with you. I'm really encouraged uh with our current ownership and our desire uh as a railroad to be community partners. That's something I I will bring that up with our uh G M tomorrow, and we'll start working with Gigi, LeBron, and DJ on potentially adding anything to the list that the city's financially able to manage that were able to come in and do the work to mix those, so. We'll, if I could snap my fingers and all of them be perfect, I absolutely would, but I would say give it a couple of years too. And I would say there is a good chance of significant improvements across the whole San Luis Valley, because the entire system's been neglected for a really long time. So is that kind of answer to what you're asking? Understood. We're trying to get past that reputation, oh, oh, definitely, we're trying to get past the old like bad taste. From previous ownership, so that's something we'll we'll work on and talk with the city here this coming week and start looking at other smaller options uh where it seems financially viable.
And concerned about sell issue here. Um that's what I did over the city. We have a thing in conditions, we can deal on a lot of streets where the residents haven't paid fifty percent of the assault costs. That put my money where my mouth was instead of how much I should pay. And I I I own from fourth avenue to fifth avenue. Let's get section established in the way in terror of that traffic that's going through through that road, because there has been growth in about six weeks and you know, the trials, counties show with all accounts, which is understandable, that's the one they need to close, but the impact of the other roads. Because of the higher traffic that will be on it, they just have to go somewhere else. And it's not just the residents that look through there, people driving down fucking out sick, that we gotta use those crossings. So now they need to take two crossings there, so it would be higher traffic. Another train that this evening they're giving to you, because this is brought up people now who are trying to get out of the east of other parks. But there's an accident road that was, let's speak on some objective, is still in the fight though. Well, in order for the city to do improvements on those dirt access that run on the south side of the tracks, there's still a property. And there's water lines that cross those too, so before the city can do any improvements to those with the added traffic, so with the dust, mitigation and stuff like that, that's their level property, so it's just like the parts situations. City doesn't know that. But that we can look at some of the training, training that both both accesses or improvements to those access shows. But if they could do someone's act crossing, it would be great.
Thank you.
Now, just one more question.
Yes.
Just saw something you talked about, is there a timeline for the closures?
So yeah, we're looking um if after the public meeting, it'll go in front of council, if council approves those two, um it takes thirty days, so we're looking in July.
We're looking at August, I thought.
We want to license later renewals. If council conducts these actions in capacity, the licensing going.
Yeah, thank you.
See you, kid.
You want me to proceed with that, Mayor?
Yes, please.
Time is approximately six forty seven P M. Uh on the sixteenth day of May, twenty twenty-four. We are in the city council chambers, ninety-five West First Avenue, Montevista, Colorado. Uh quorum of the city council is present, in fact, the entire city council is present. Uh this is for the purpose of a liquor license hearing on a beer and wine license. I, Jean Farish, uh city attorney, have been asked to act as hearing officer. Um there's no objections to that, I'll go ahead and proceed. This is a, what they call a quasi judicial hearing for the purpose of considering an application for the applicants, an application of uh Colorado uh Grocers Group LLC, which is doing business as top value stores. Two twenty-two Solar Avenue, Montevista, for the sale of beer and wine packaged to the public. And these uh types of hearings, the city council sits as a local licensing authority, liquor licensing authority to take action on the license application. And since this is a formal hearing, all witnesses will be sworn. Uh a liquor license is a little different than getting other types of licenses, like a fishing license, so the applicant has a burden of showing that the reasonable needs of the neighborhood require the granting of the license. The application has been signed by Mohammed Chotani as owner of the business on March the fifth, twenty twenty-four. The application contains a lease agreement dated May the twenty-second, twenty twenty-three between Cadet Twenty-three LLC as landlord and Colorado Grocers. As landlord and Colorado Grocers Group LLC as tenant with a term of twenty years. And so it ends on May the twenty second twenty forty three, which would be subject to renewal apparently. Uh it also shows ownership of grocery stores in South Fork and Creed. The Montevista application for two twenty two Solar Avenue um. And top values grocery stores. Uh, property is stated to be two million eight hundred thousand dollars. The application contains an operating agreement signed by Mr. Chotan- Chotani. As the registered agent and the managing member with an address of one oh three West Second Avenue Creed, Colorado. We have a current certificate of good standing by the Colorado Secretary of State on three six of twenty four, so it's current. Um, we have an individual history record of Mr. Chutani filed. We also have a diagram of the premises with a eight foot by four foot wine shelf. And a thirty two foot by six foot beer open cooler on the what would be the south side of the store. Um, we also have a petition in support of the application showing the needs and desires of the neighborhood. That was circulated between May the twenty sixth and twenty seventh for the business. And residential portions of the city. Which showed ninety one percent of the businesses and ninety percent of the residents supporting the petition. Um, and ninety percent and ten percent uh. When I said ninety percent, uh so ninety percent uh for and ten percent against um. Opposing the petition, so there were a hundred and three total signatures. And that breaks down to being in favor on the business survey results. Uh thirty yes and three no for a total of thirty three. Um, and on the residential survey results, sixty three yes and seven no for a total of seventy. Um. The neighborhood in these liquor license applications has long been defined as the entire city. Of the city of Montevista, which is a city of approximately forty one hundred persons. Um, we have a couple of liquor stores um in the city distributing uh beer and wine. Uh closer, which are actually closer to Safeway than they are to this location. Uh which also has a beer and wine license, Safeway does, it's the same type of license being applied for here. Um. And uh no outlets uh really uh on the. Close proximity of top value. Um, all application fees have been paid to the city and the state of Colorado, so the application's complete. Are we gonna have, we will take testimony for, starting out and any opposition testimony after that before it's remanded to the city council. Who would like to testify as the person's in favor?
Thank you very much, City Council. My name is Brandon Sandberg. My attorney registration number is four two five oh seven. I'm with the law firm of Dill Dill Carr, Stonebreaker and Hutchings. Uh I'm representing the applicant at the hearing this evening. We will have two people that will be testifying. We'll have a representative from Liquor Pros testify first with your permission to discuss the petitioning results. And then Mr. Chitani, as the managing member of the applicant, will then be providing testimony. To describe the the concept of the store, for those who have not been there, the reasoning for the application, training, policies and procedures. And again, we thank you all for your time this evening and and as it was mentioned, we are here for a. It's a fermented malt beverage and wine off premise license, so the alcohol would be purchased at the grocery store and then taken off the premise. To to be consumed at home or wherever it may be.
Thank you. So uh who's your first witness, sir?
If we could please call the representative from Liquor Pros, please. Uh she's on online as well.
Oh, yes, yes, sir. For the record, my name is Eva Maloff Garrettson. Uh and I am one of the owners of Liquor Licensing Professionals, doing business as Liquor Pros.
Excuse me, do you solemnly swear that the testimony that you will give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, sir, begone?
Yes, sir.
Please proceed.
Thank you. Um.
Ms. Garrettson, if you introduced yourself as the owner of Liquor Pros, can you please uh tell City Council, what does Liquor Pros do?
Yes, sir. So for the record, um Liquor Pros is a um. A professional survey company. We conduct needs and desire surveys. For both liquor and marijuana licenses throughout the entire state of Colorado. We've conducted well over four thousand uh surveys that I I've been a part of to date. And um we are a third party petitioning company, which means we do not guarantee results for the client. It states so specifically in our agreement with the the applicant that we just simply perform an unbiased survey. We give um the residents, business owners and managers information about who they are, what type of license they're applying for. And then get feedback in order to provide to the authorities so that they can make the determination of whether or not. Um the needs and desires are being met for each specific license. Uh we are also a uh trainer, liquor training. Uh we do liquor training for the state of Colorado. We've actually done training for. Uh the Stampede um uh for a couple of years now, for a few years now. And then uh we also uh do liquor measurements to define, to make sure that. Everything, everyone's compliant uh with current liquor laws and restrictions.
Ms. Garrettson, what services did Liquor Pros provide the applicant in this matter?
So we were hired by the applicant to conduct the needs and desire survey for the new retail fermented malt beverage and wine off premises license. Um, so we um went ahead and conducted that that survey form. Contacted Ms. Uh Yunita Vance, which she has been amazing. I just want to put that out there. Uh very helpful, very uh thorough. She's done an amazing job with us. Um, but she, working with them, uh with her, we went ahead and um outlined the map um of the area. Um primarily, we were given a uh five hundred foot uh buffer uh for the boundary. But what we do is we went ahead and we continued going out um and extended that out further. To the current residents, business owners, managers uh inside the area.
And Ms. Garrettson, why is it important to get the opinions or the results from the businesses as well as residents? And why is it so important to get such a large uh scale or or cover such a large area?
Well, because the the current, the five hundred foot buffer only can, you know, contain so much in there. And in this case, the residential areas could be affected as well. Also, business owners, managers and residents um also need to know what type of liquor um is being. Um issued or applied for in an area in case they feel that there are any concerns regarding the liquor license. And how it's going to be handled, um particularly with the applicant.
And can you please describe the results? I know it was mentioned previously, but just for the record, if you can describe the results, please.
Yes, sir. So as a council member stated, we did obtain a total of a hundred and three signatures, but we did. Um try and contact all the folks in and around the areas and especially the residential. Uh made attempted contact with three hundred and sixty seven business owners, managers and residents. We carry with us two packets. Uh a business packet and a residential packet. On the business packet, we do ask those folks to write in. Or identify themselves as a business owner or manager inside the um each location. And with the residents, we actually do door to door. Um so on those days, we actually try to find folks um to let them know. Who we are, what type of license is being applied for. On the front page of our packets, we also have the hearing information. So if folks are concerned about this. We certainly invite them to the public hearing um so that they can ask the applicant any questions. Or once again, address the city council um with their concerns as well. Um, we did, um as he mentioned, uh we had ten percent uh opposed. Um in that, in our packets, we actually have a spot in there where we ask folks to write in why they are in favor or opposed to this license. The reason we do that is because there are reasons that may not specifically uh address the need and desire. And by case law, you can throw those out. And this didn't happen in this one. Um they went ahead and understood the the application and everything, signed no, but declined to provide us a reason. So we count those as valid reasons of opposition. Um and so that's why we break it out the way we do.
And what were the ultimate results as far as in favor and opposed to?
Um ninety percent in favor, ten percent opposed, and um we've done several of these new retail fermented malt. Be- malt beverage and wine off premises license. I think today uh we've done. Close to forty of them and this um other in other jurisdictions. And typically, the favorable percentage amount um that we've received with this is usually around high seventies, low eighties. So this one at ninety percent is on the upper end of that, so um with our experience, it clearly shows a need and desire. For this license in the area and that the existing outlets have not yet met that need.
And is part of the reason, do you believe that you've done so many of these recently is due to the law change? That's obviously now allowed for F M B on premises to carry wine and which has resulted in new applications and modifications of current licenses?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That is a demand that is coming up. Of course, it passed and then um so we have. Locations like Come and Go Maverick um grocery stores, convenience stores, you name it. That are now asking for this uh both a fermented malt beverage and wine off premise license.
Ms. Garrettson, did you provide the results to uh Montevista as required prior to the hearing?
Yes, sir, I did.
And City Council, i- if this is not already part of the packet or admitted, we we would respectfully request that this be admitted into the evidence in the hearing?
We will take official notice that uh it has been submitted to the council and will be part of the record in this case.
Thank you very much. Um I have no further questions for Ms. Garrettson, but I would open the witness to uh City Council, please.
Thank you. Anyone else in favor of the license? Wants to testify?
We do have Mr. Chitani who can testify, please.
Is he by?
He's virtual as well.
Mr. Chitani? You raise your right hand, please. You solemnly swear the testimony that you have given this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, sir, begone.
Yes, sir, I do.
Please state your name.
Mohammed Chutani.
Please proceed, sir.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chitani, how are you associated with the applicant in this case?
I'm the president owner of the O Grocers Group LLC.
And that does include ownership of Top Value, is that right?
That's correct.
How long have you owned Top Value?
It's uh roughly close to two years now.
And why did you decide to purchase the business?
So I've been in this business for more than thirty years and uh I had uh previous to Top Value. I had the locations in South Fork and Kentucky Bell, uh Creed, Colorado. So uh and this opportunity came about where uh it was a good opportunity for us to go ahead and purchase this business. And it would fit right for us and that was the reason uh bought the top value.
And do you have uh your other businesses in Colorado? Do some of them also have liquor licenses?
Yes, uh I have location in uh Glenwood Springs and as I mentioned, uh South Fork and uh Creed.
And have you received any liquor violations for your businesses that have licenses here in Colorado?
No, sir.
And for those that have not been to Top Value, how would you describe the the grocery store?
So basically, it's roughly about twelve thousand square feet uh. And we cater uh a lot of the community and uh we host them, you know, as much as possible. Because uh this is uh. Uh the 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 main grocery store, in my opinion, you know, for the area and uh people love to shop there.
And what are the type of products that that you sell? The, I assume, the typical grocery store products?
Yeah, it's it's all like, you know, like all groceries, you know, uh uh. Uh vegetables, you know, meat, uh you name it, you know, we have it.
And is the majority of the sales then come from the the sale of food products? Is that right?
That's correct, sir.
Okay. And is it important to you as the owner of Top Value to be providing your customers with the one stop shopping convenience factor?
Yeah, it's important uh because a lot of our customers, they demand uh in, you know, uh beer and wine. Uh because it's inconvenient for them to go to two or three locations to do their, you know, normal day to day shopping.
And let's talk a little bit more about that that demand. Is that the reason why you've applied for the fermented malt beverage and wine off premise license?
Yes, that is the reason uh because, you know, we've been hearing from the customer, you know, how come you don't carry uh, you know, beer and wine? Uh, I would say at least, you know. One third, thirty to forty percent of our customer, you know, they ask uh these questions like on daily basis.
Yeah. And are most of your customers, to your knowledge, residents in Montevista and the surrounding area?
Yes, sir. We cater all of the Montevista area.
And we'll talk a little bit about the employees. Approximately how many employees are are at the store?
Uh, rough number, we have anywhere between twenty to twenty two.
And are many of the employees residents there in Montevista?
Uh, I believe all of them.
And I I believe talking with your manager, your your manager at the store was, has been there, employed for for many years and through previous owners, is that right?
Yes, sir. He's been there for eleven plus years at the same store.
And there are other managers at at the location as well, correct?
Yeah, his wife operates the store at uh South Fork, which is uh Rainbow Grocery.
And how often are are you at the the store here in Montevista?
Uh, I try to be there at least, you know, uh once or twice a month.
And if you're not there, how often are you in communication with the management team or or other uh employees of the store?
Uh at least uh, you know, multiple times on, you know, multiple times on daily basis.
So you have an understanding of what's going on with your store and you're you are engaged uh every day?
Yes, sir.
Let's talk a little bit about the training. I- if your license here is approved, what type of training would you be providing your staff regarding alcohol sales?
So uh we have already trained three of the managers at this location with uh training. Training Pro three sixty uh and which is the state certified uh uh trainers, you know, to make sure that. Uh we abide by the rules and regulations of the city and the state uh to sell the alcohol.
And if the license is approved, will you have other employees there involved with the the sale of alcohol trained as well?
Yes, sir. We are very strict on on these policies. We train everybody to make sure that uh. Uh we don't do any kind of uh, you know, mishaps by selling to, you know, underage.
Well, let's talk a little bit more about other policies and procedures. What are the carding requirements? What would they be at the store?
So basically, you know, we call everyone, even if you look like twenty five or you look like forty five. You know, and uh and uh we don't accept the the vertical license, you know, of Colorado. Uh so we call everyone.
And what about your POS system? Can you describe for City Council, how would it help deter the sale to minors? What type of prompts would be on the POS system?
So the the P POS system we use currently, we can enable the system to where it would require. The the cashiers or the employees to make sure they scan, I mean, they, yeah. They scan and they look at the driving license before selling the alcohol. It would not. Scan the alcohol, it would come up like a prompt on the screen to check the license. Uh obviously, it's not enabled now because, you know, we don't have the license yet. Uh but once is uh is approved, then we will enable that uh that part in our software.
So when an alcohol product gets scanned, there's a prompt that comes up. So when an alcohol product gets scanned, there's a prompt that comes up and the sale cannot be completed without an I D being scanned or a date of birth entered, is that right?
That is correct.
And then your managers have already been trained. What type of oversight do the managers do for the, the cashiers?
So, uh, basically, we have managers that are, you know, on the floor all the time. And, uh, you know, because we have, uh, we have, uh, you know, supervisor, I mean, and then the store manager and then the floor manager. So we always have employees, you know, that are, you know, watched by the managers to make sure that, you know, day-to-day basis, daily work, or everything is being done properly.
And you're aware that Montevista does have a lot of tourists that, that visit the location, is that right?
Yes, sir. I'm aware of it because I'm also in South Fork.
Okay. Um, because of that, are you going to be purchasing an I D book which has examples of I Ds from other states? Just to verify that your, uh, employees can verify that, that driver's licenses or I Ds that are provided from other states are, uh, in fact, accurate and, and valid?
Yes, sir. That is one of the policies. We do, uh, buy all of the I D books to make sure that, uh, all the employees are trained properly. And then if they have any confusion, they can look at the book.
What would happen if you had an employee that sold to a minor visibly intoxicated, failed a compliance check? What, what are some job consequences?
So, uh, we are no tolerance policy, uh, and if this happens, we immediately, uh, you know, uh, fire that employee because, uh, that is one strict rule and policy that we follow.
And will your staff be aware of all these policies and procedures and potential job consequences?
Yes, sir. It, it will be added to their, uh, employee handbook.
And Mr. Chitani, there was a layout that was provided and I, I believe city council, you have a copy of that. I, I, did I hear that correctly?
We have a copy of that, Jim.
Yes, they have a copy of that.
Hey, thank you, Ms. Vance. So, Mr. Chitani, for those that may not have been in Top Value before, can you just describe the layout? Specifically, the, the proposed F M B and wine permanent product placement, please?
Yes, sir. So, uh, when you enter the top value location, uh, you know, the, the right side first is the deli section and then there's cashiers. You go through the cashiers and then there's a main floor. And then on the far left-hand wall, uh, on the corner of the store where there's no doors, there's no other exit or entry. Uh, that's where we're going to be keeping the coolers and the wine racks, uh, to make sure that, you know, there's, you know, customer, uh, can go out there and grab it and, and, you know, come back through the cashier and, uh, go through the, you know, the process of purchasing it. And, uh, and there's no, there's no other, there's no other way that it could be shoplifted or taken or something like that because every customer has to go through the cashier section to exit the store. We only have one entrance and one exit.
And do your cash registers or your employees that work the cash register is going to have a clear line of sight to be able to monitor the area?
Oh, yes, sir. They have, uh, visual clearance of, of the, of almost entire store.
And do you also have managers and other employees that walk the store throughout the day to, to help customers, greet customers? And also just make sure there's no one getting alcohol that shunk?
Yes, sir. That's normal, you know, for any grocery store. So we have, you know, employees and cashiers and managers walking through. And then plus, uh, we have a full surveillance system into the store. And, uh, we're going to be adding a couple of cameras into that area to where we can watch it very closely. And, uh, we also have a third-party surveillance team that watches all of these cameras for all of the businesses.
And you were asking to license the entire premise, is that correct?
I'm sorry?
You're licensing the entire premises, the request, that's why the entire premises bold and outline, correct?
Yes, sir.
And then just for a few, kind of miscellaneous matters, Mr. Chitani, um, this location was posted as required for the hearing this evening, is that right?
Yes, sir.
And you heard previously that there is a lease that's in place for the applicant for at least a year, correct?
Yes, sir. It's almost twenty years, I think.
And Mr. Chitani, is there anything else that, that you want city council to know about your application, your, your business, anything else for, for them to consider?
Uh, basically, you know, we're there to support and cater our community. And this is one of the requirement that they have been asking us for quite some time. And we feel like, you know, uh, this is a part of something that, uh, helped them, you know, not be inconvenient to go to different locations to do their, you know, day-to-day purchasing.
And some of the other locations that were mentioned by city council, those are not, that, that have F M B and, and wine or retail liquor stores. They're, they're not in close proximity to your location, are they?
No, sir. Uh, one of the city member mentioned that, uh, even the safe with other grocery store have also, uh, you know, bought, uh, beer, beer and wine, uh, license. And, uh, even though they have other location right next to it.
I have no further questions for Mr. Chitani, but city council has any questions for him, please?
Mr. Chihani, uh, I have one question. Uh, I'm not clear on, do you have a, uh, automated checkout procedure? Automation?
No, sir. No, sir. We don't have a self-checkout.
Okay. And you're not planning to have one in the near future at any time?
Not at, 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 uh, at a moment because, uh, you know, we feel that, uh, one-to-one servicing of our customer is very important to us, you know. Uh, we're not like a corporate, corporate, you know, world to where, you know, come by and just leave. You know, we, we like to shake hand, we like to greet the customers and take care of them.
Okay, so all your checkers would be checking at the individual checkout tables, the, uh, customers coming through?
That is correct.
Beer and wine. Okay, thank you, sir. I have no further questions. Um, do you have any further witnesses, counsel?
I do not. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is anyone, uh, else in favor? Is there anyone else opposed to the application? Okay, the application is complete. This matter will be remanded to the city council for action on the license for beer and wine license. We will close the hearings.
All the other places are looking to do the same thing.
Yeah, I did some fair.
Got no issue.
Make a motion to approve Colorado Grocers Group LLC, our new beer and wine license located at two-two-two Solar Avenue. Been moved in second to approve Colorado Grocers Group LLC, a new beer and wine license located at two-two-two Solar Avenue. But top value, is there anyone with a question?
It's very thorough.
Oh, yeah.
You need a?
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Lorenz?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segala?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve the liquor license for Colorado Grocers Group LLC, new beer and wine license located at two-two Solar Avenue, doing business as top value. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. And just so the record can be clear, uh, that'll be for the retail fermented malt beverage and wine off premise, is that correct, Ms. Vance?
That is correct.
Perfect. Thank you. We really appreciate everyone's time. And as Ms. Garrettson said, Ms. Vance has been wonderful to work with. I always enjoy working in Montevista. Um, she, she's been fantastic. So thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Here, we will move on to, uh, ordinance. Offense nine-two-seven feeling and then we in acting for the monitor minutes, we go to the board. Offense nine-two-seven has a lot of parts to it, as you've seen. Uh, we've been working with this for some time. They, they, and myself, we don't manage. I think everybody has probably read the memo that the company did, so I'm not going to, um, take a lot of time with that. But what we found out by looking at all the different code divisions was that there was a lot of, um, conflict in the code about the between the planning commission and the board adjustment. Uh, so we developed ordinance nine-two-seven. We tried to get rid of all these, uh, incongruous parts between the, uh, admin portion and the, uh, the, uh, substantive portion and the zone code. So in doing that, uh, we placed the administrative parts, we condensed that down, got rid of, uh, things that were in the subsidy part that were stuck also in the admin part. And a lot of it was really redundant also. And, uh, so this calls for a board adjustment that consists of five members, each to be appointed for three years by the city council. One such members shall be an executive member from the planning commission with full voting powers. Board numbers shall be, uh, board members shall be residents of the city of Montevista and or own or be in legal possession of real property within the city. Now, a lot of that language really kind of comes from the state statute. And we aren't necessarily bound by the provisions of the state statute, uh, as, uh, the home of the municipality. But a lot of the body of case law has really developed around the state statute. So, uh, I think you will, when you look at board's adjustment provisions, you probably will find the language that we're using here is pretty common and it, a lot of it mimics the, uh, state statute on words adjustment. So we've got, first of all, chapter two of administration. And we've repealed these, uh, provisions that are redundant or should be over in the substantive and procedural part of the evidence. And then, chapter twelve, uh, we have placed the board of adjustment powers and procedures in. And to kind of boil that down, the board of adjustment shall have the following powers and give these appeals to hear and decide appeals from and review any order, requirement, decision or determination where it's alleged by the appellant. There's an error in any order, requirement, decision or refusal made by any administrative official or agency in the city. Variances, the board adjustment is the decision-making body for a request of variance from certain zone requirements of this code. Board adjustment considers your request of variance based on the procedure set forth in this other section, next section, um, two sections, twelve-two-thirty, variance application procedure. In addition, it would have, uh, the power to interpret the chapter where you have any type of ambiguity or conflict. Then it goes into a few specifics about the, uh, the criteria and policies for boards of, uh, boards of justice. Uh, for example, a var- a variance cannot be granted as a convenience to property owner. Self-imposed hardship cannot serve as justification for variance. In other words, if the hardship was self-created by the action or negligence of the applicants or if the applicants commenced work on the project without first obtaining the required permits or had failed to inform themselves of permanent compliance. Uh, then, and this is basically the self-imposed hardship aspect that boards of adjustment consider. Let me just say at this point, board adjustment is nothing new in the city of Montevista. When I was first city attorney back in seventy-four, one of the early cases, uh, I went up on, uh, to the, uh, court of appeals representing the city on was a board adjustment case. And, uh, we did obtain a favorable, uh, ruling from court of appeals in the case, which upheld the city board adjustment. Uh, so it goes back, um, quite a way. And the second part here is whether there are unique physical circumstances or conditions such as exceptionally irregularity or illness and shellness and steep slopes or weapons on piece of property. In other words, that a, uh, property owner really can't do anything about. He just, uh, inherits this property, buys his property and may be, uh, in a residential low-density area. And, uh, yet he can't really build something, uh, according to the specs that you have in the code because of the ditch running through it or wetlands or something like that. So those are criteria there. And, and boards of adjustment are a kind of an escape, uh, safety valve uh, that makes the code work because not everything you can do, you can put in a code. And, but it, at the same time, it's supposed to be an unusual exception when you do get a variance for this property because you're going directly contrary to the code. Now, this is one of the reasons we placed it also in the, uh, in an independent board because the conflicts go along with, uh, present code. Started out saying the planning zone commission, there's no authority to prove variances. And then it says the three most senior members of the, uh, Montevista Planning Zone Commission shall additionally provide and carry out the obligations of board adjustment, where the duties of board are explicitly laid out. And the principal function is to grant or deny variances. So you have twelve-three-twenty saying the planning commission has no authority to grant variances. Section two-ten-twenty says the planning commission can constitute the V O A and carry out these functions. Um, you also have, uh, three members pointed right now on the planning commission. And it takes four members to approve a variance. So you have multiple incongruities in the present, uh, code. And that's what we've tried to do is get, uh, get rid of these, make this as simple as possible. Um, the variance application procedures are in there. The appeals that, and it takes a, as we said, a current, the current vote of four members of the board of adjustment to revoke any order, department, decision or determination of any administrative which were charged with the enforcement of chapter or the decided figure of the applicant, any matter which is, uh, required passing the chapter. In other words, that's super gnarly. Now, it's intentional that way because the board adjustment decision is a decision uh, to, uh, not apply the code. Uh, and to grant all the special exceptions that are popularized. And then, uh, on court review, uh, the only appeal from the board of judgment is to the district court. And what they call a red circular. That is just kind of a capsule and I tried to, uh, outline all that in the memo to you. I hope that was clear enough. You might have any questions, unfortunately. Not. To make the, this matter to you for
So there's a section in here, eight. Uh, could you, could you go over that a little bit for me? Page?
Yeah, I think it's in, in your memo. Uh, paragraph eight. Talks about
Oh, okay. I probably should cover that. Discuss this a little bit. This is a little bit unconnected, but it's, it's, is connected in the sense that, uh, we make reference to appendix two-F, which is the consolidated fee schedule. Uh, we had these, uh, schedules in the code for a certain period of time. Uh, and we passed an ordinance back in twenty fifteen, I think it was, putting all of these city policies, uh, city organization chart, the rules of procedure, personal policy, business purchasing policy. Uh, city organization chart, the rules of procedure, personal policy, business purchasing policy, access to public records, consolidated fee schedule. Uh, into the code for simple, uh. Access, really, more than anything, uh, they're all, uh. Resolutions, so they only carry the force of resolution, but they're there that. So that they are available to the council, uh, if you want to look at it within the binder of the code. And, uh. They are subject to very frequent, uh. Amendments. They are probably referred to. Almost as often as, uh. Nationally code, the subsidy provisions are. So under those circumstances, we arrived at a way of doing that, that we would not have to go through codification. With, uh, unit codes, just simply by having them done the clerking and passed out, I think we've got like thirteen copies. Of the code out there existing right now. And just placed into the code so that the public would always have, uh. A, uh. A ready access without having to go in and file a, uh, request for open records or something like that, to come out with policies of the city. So. If you want to do that, uh, it would be as is, if you don't want to do that, and you want to keep them out, uh. We've got a, uh, alternate, uh, language in the, um. Consolidation of the policies of the city, uh, so that's where that came from.
Well, I tend to be concerned about. And I, and I guess I would want a little more time to, to look at this. We discutify things like the city organizational chart. Would that put it in ordinance?
That, uh, that was, that was just a codified, and I believe. I believe that was only codified as a policy, I'll have to check that. And some of these other ones, I believe, were just codified as policies, there's a, there's an ordinance allowing the policies. Um, to be. Well. Policies to be placed in the code as, even though they're simply by resolution.
Right.
Of the.
Because it's council. This, you know, we as council, I mean, our job is to hire the city manager, but that's one thing, right?
Yeah.
Right? And the city manager is potentially the operating officer for the entire city. And we're a tested. City manager, chief executive officer, general manager, pick your title, right? And every, has everybody reparted to the city manager? Have, have, who, who are the parties to the city manager? All city employees?
All city employees are part of the city, the way the organizational chart goes is. The ones who are under the, uh, council directly, is the city manager. The city attorney, municipal judge. The thing, three, I think. So they work directly to the city council.
Right. Just want, want to make sure that, you know, I, I have a believer in making sure that. You know, our city manager has the flexibility to make changes in, in the organization if needed, with a lot of.
We had an ordinance back then, Council Howard, that, uh, allowed the city manager, I think, control over all of the departments.
And personal policy too, as far as personal policies, that you're dealing with. Policies related to employees, is that correct?
Right. City manager has control in that.
Should want to make sure that, you know, we're not. Imposing some kind of. Oversight, you know. Extra effort, extra work on the city manager in terms of running the city.
No, that's, that's not the intent of this at all, uh. Uh, this was simply a matter of. Accessibility to the policies and where they're placed and, uh. Whether when people come in, they want to see policy, decision, but you can immediately see it by hearing this right. As an appendix to the code. That's like I said, the other alternative is just to have a compilation of resolutions, uh, but. That's going to be probably in separation from certain, as they are and may not get this access as quickly as it was, I guess, when added in the code.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, sir. Any others?
Sorry, I'm worried about going off this. Is that what I was saying? First reading, right? First reading? The first reading. About to read through this. A lot of, can't read. Well, I mean, by the time you get through the third paragraph, you completely forgot what you read through the third paragraph. Get it now, see if we got it. Make sure what you said. Make sure what he says.
There's, there's so many appeals and reaffirmations on that, I'd be surprised to. Not go into it, you know, and. This is the only way to really do one subject like that is do an omnibus thing, because otherwise then you're going back and you're doing amendments to your ordinance, you're just fast.
He's done a lot of good work on this. He's done a lot of good work.
Thank you, Susan. Yes. That's your end, he says.
It's a lot of hours.
Yes.
Thank you.
Good question.
Annie. Eight o'clock.
I know. Where are you? We're checking my business.
Place, oh, I guess, in the internet?
Yeah.
Really? Did you just come to listen today?
I was curious of the real discussion. Maybe it's in the city council meetings, that's what I joined. I just get a whole, sort of experience. Starting the last council meeting, I was like. Y'all are the. Statistic. So similar topics.
Yep, yes. But this one. That guy was very thorough.
Lawyer, no.
But, you know, tonight we don't have any staff, any. Rob, Rob.
Yes.
Zip it.
You're back? Sorry. Say zip it. Make no loss, ladies. Learned years ago, shut up when she talks. Aren't you getting it? I'm, uh, you're supposed to. That work. Yeah, I feel like.
To go.
We could either table it, or we could approve it on first reading, and then we got still.
Second reading.
Second thing to deal with, and then if we also, then we could have passed it on second reading. Um, okay, that, that is in for the two reading.
Yeah, it, it would be recommended because you all may not remember, but. Our first, so it has to go through two readings. And our first meeting in July is canceled because of. Uh, the fourth of July. So. Pardon?
I do it out of that.
Yeah. So, to keep it moving. Because even, even after second reading, then you, then we've got another thirty days before it gets enacted, so.
Making motion to approve ordinance. Ninety-seven repealing and reenacting provisions of the Monvista Municipal Code relating to the board of adjustments on first reading. Been moved in seconded to approve ordinance number ninety-two seven, including reenacting provisions of the Monvista Municipal Code relating to the board of adjustments. Is there any more discussion? Anita?
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Lorenz?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segula?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve ordinance nine twenty-seven repealing and reenacting provisions of the Monvista Municipal Code. Relating to the board of adjustment on first reading.
Okay, we can go to contact agreements and leases. Contract update with Biaro Wireless to extend the height of the tower linking to the city hall.
I have no idea what I'm doing.
According to everybody else. Yeah.
Well, I agree. So.
And that's the difference.
Before you, is an agreement to amend the previous Bureau contract. And what they're asking is to amend the height of the tower. The current height of the tower is forty feet. And they're asking to extend the height of the tower fifty-six feet to better the line of profound. Reception without. The strength. When it's option.
Two, two fifty-six feet or is it an additional fifty?
No, two, just two fifty-six. So they're currently at forty feet and they want to raise it to fifty-six feet. And that is the only one that they're asking for.
I'm gonna get a motion. Sorry. Been moved in seconded. To approve the, uh. Amendment to the contract with Biaro Wireless to extend the height of the tower located at City Hall in Philly, just to set them. Is there any more discussion? Anita?
Counselor Howard?
Yeah.
Counselor Lorenz?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segula?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve the contract update with Biaro Wireless to extend the height of the tower. From forty feet to fifty-six feet.
Go with that F A A grant. Twenty-five pages of.
Is it gonna read it all? A lot of writing back.
So, I, I apologize that this is not in your packet, we did not receive this until yesterday. Um, the letter, and I won't read the entire thing, but I will go through most of it, this is more of a formality. Um, city council's already heard this, you've already actually alerted the contract for the taxi lane. Um, so this was dated May fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, to this G G Dennis, city manager. Dear G G Dennis. The grant offered for the bipartisan infrastructure law of a bill. Airport infrastructure grant, project number three dash zero eight dash zero zero four two. Dash zero one nine dash twenty twenty-four. At the Monvista Municipal Airport is attached for execution. This letter outlines the steps that we must take to properly enter into this agreement. And provides the useful information. So with that letter, what it is, and what I need council to approve is. First, to approve us entering into a grant with the. U S Department of Transportation, Federal Aviation Administration. The grant itself is for our construction of the taxi lane. And it is a obligation of three hundred thirty-six thousand, one hundred seventy-seven dollars. And to authorize G G Dennis to sign the contract and, um. Attorney Farish to also sign. So, like I said, it is a formality, new version already proven, the budget has already been set, this, this project is funded. Um, the bids came in slightly under this, so we are able to do not only the taxi lane, but also the taxiway. Um, so we have more than enough money budgeted. To complete this project. So tonight I ask the council, one, make a motion to enter into the contract, and two, to allow G G and Jean to sign the contract. The move. And. And we've been seconded to go with the word both, I'll make sure what the law. And to contact with the F A M to where T T M Eric Stein. So. You know, we've already spent the money, I guess we better.
You'd be amazed how quickly we've done that.
Hasn't been. So this is basically, the federal government finally did their appropriations, so the F A has the necessary funds to go ahead and move forward.
Is there any more discussion? Anita?
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Lorenz?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segula?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to enter into the F F eight grant. Approval and to allow for G G Dennis. City manager to sign and city attorney Jean Farish to sign.
Thank you for that. Thank you, Rob, and you're all. I don't see Judy's name on there, so we don't have.
Next time, I promise.
Next time, no good. Staff proposal, reports in action, we will roll with recreation. It's gonna be great, kid. Ready, Rob? Short and sweet. Um, to the people who could be adult men and women's basketball, right? One more, the fifth is over here. Um, Sanford did take second again.
Second.
So, uh, your, uh, your guy that works for you was broke, couldn't hit nothing. Cars on the back that tomorrow, part?
Oh, cut it.
Um, we are taking registrations right now for our youth baseball, so we're just entertaining registration as far as youth baseball, and I'm not really filled up. With like Miami participants that, and, uh. We have to turn kids away, and I hate doing that, but gotta, gotta start cutting registration out on a certain date. Um, continue to offer our yoga and yoga classes, and let you start participating in that. Um, having fun with those two things and. Uh, I think the courts go back up pretty soon for a couple of camps that we're gonna be having during the summer. So, uh, in June. And that's it for recreation, any questions? It shouldn't be a hard time, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Sky.
It's evening, council. Catch up with a few numbers, um, so in April we have sixty-two events. May, we're on schedule for four week four events, and so far in June, we only have twenty-four events. Um, the ones that we do have in June are, are just longer events, um, so we have a youth group that will be prepared. Uh, in two of our rooms for just two whole weeks, um, so that kind of took up a lot of our space and time. Um, but that also accounts for why some of our members are. Uh, and then for the year, for twenty twenty-four, uh, but right now we have three hundred and sixty three events. So that number is continuing to climb and continuing to vary. But we're good. Um, a couple of other things we have going on, um, I've been working with Commissioner Glover as well as the Bureau of Defense and County Public Health and Emergency Services. And they have, um, agreed to fund our wireless cell phone boosters. Um, so I do remember those were the three thousand dollar apiece. On cell phone boosters, because we are in emergency shelter and, um, a lot of our events require security, which is our law enforcement. They have agreed. They have agreed that they would fund that because um of the emergency shelters. So hopefully getting those resolved hopefully before stampede, they have ordered. So that'll give us three A T and T and two for I then, which is going to be really exciting. Um, they finished installing the gates on the left side of the complex, but I think um G G is working with them to fix a couple of the things that weren't tied up to standards. Uh, but it does look amazing out there and really excited to see um how we utilize that for stampede and other events that we have going on.
And hang on Steph. Thank you. And on these gates, the gates will be left unlocked unless they need to be um locked for specific security or event. So if you get asked by any of the four H people, they'll still have access into the McMullen building.
Um, I am working with um bleachers. Unlimited International, International. Um, they are the company that did the um original design and installation for the grandstands in the arena in two thousand eight. Um, we have not done any maintenance on them since two thousand eight, so uh they are coming down next week to do an inspection for us. Um, and they'll give us recommendations on things that they think we should improve and um as well as things that have to be improved. But the construction um and the major construction we did with the building, they think that some of the foundation has shifted. Um, so they want to cut, excuse me, they want to come and do an inspection and make sure that we're still structurally structurally sound to have a bunch of people on there for stampede. Um, so they're coming down next week to do that inspection. Um, and they should have a report from them hopefully after that, um, so that we can get those changes for things fixed before stampede. Um, I worked with G G to get approved um to have three A T Ms permanently at Sky High so that we wouldn't make our events bring A T Ms in. Um, so we would have two that would stay inside the event center and one that would stay on the conference center side in the hallway. Um, as a part of that agreement with um the A T M company, we of the city would get a percentage of that transaction fee for every transaction fee. Um, you don't remember a lot of this off the top of my head. I think it was a dollar twenty five for transaction.
Something like that.
Um, so I will work with Judy on getting that set up to get directly into the city funds, but it's just one more amenity that we can allow all of our guests and not make our event hosts have to provide their own A T M. Um, and then the last thing I have is I will be attending my second year for the venue management school coming up now in June. Um, so I will be gone the seventh to the fourteenth and I will graduate on the thirteenth. That that's if I pass the test, so fingers crossed. There's a lot of things I have in my life, so we'll get there. Thank you.
Stephanie. City attorney.
You guys are gonna get tired of listening to me.
Scaring me when you keep bringing up all the big books.
Okay, so starting now with Munich Court. We're back up to fifty cases now. It's the average. Um. What's a little different about this session, I think, is most of the cases involve girls rather than boys. Um, especially the uh the vaping cases, um, big um uh big fight in the school between two girls. I'm going to meet her there. Um. I uh had a conversation with uh Scott Weedman, this is A E call back. And uh we're still on the same track of was the understanding, but we were wondering to uh we weren't getting any feedback really of what the school was doing for disciplinary measures on the vaping situations, alcohol situations and so forth. Um, and he assured us that uh we would get some more track on that. This was cause the way we got it set up right now is the school does the first two disciplinary measures before we get involved in those. And then by the time it comes around to the third time with the same individuals. Um, then we're thinking jurisdiction of it and get to the judge and um then it starts getting referred out to the agencies uh that are available, circle program and some of those. Uh, so I think we still have a pretty good understanding and he assured me we'll get some history on the kids that are uh being brought in for school, offenses in school. Um, and the disciplinary measures that the school are imposing. So uh beside this, uh we've got the trespasses, uh we've got shopliftings, the injury to property, uh possession, consumption of alcohol by underage uh persons or disorderly conduct and those types of things. We have almost every session, so but we're we're seeing it back about the average number of cases, maybe a little more than the average number of cases with the fifty cases there. Um. One of the interesting things that we got into uh recently was we had a complaint from a citizen. The police department has uh you'll see if you go in there and you'll see it uh up there, a uh poster, which is the police officer's prayer. So we had a citizen come in on the First Amendment demands uh about this. And uh G G wanted to do an opinion on it. I did. And uh and she wrote back to this individual, uh saying, look, um, this has been discussed and the city attorneys have done research on it. They follow an opinion. First Amendment has two provisions concerning religion. Uh, the established clause and free exercise clause. The establishment clause prohibits the government from establishing religion. Historically, this is meant prohibiting state sponsored churches. The United States Supreme Court established three part test in the oven versus Kurtzman. Um, nineteen seventy one case. This poster with complacent do not seem to rise to the level of an excessive entanglement between church and state. Free exercise clause protects citizens' rights to practice their religion as they say, please, is it please? As long as the practice does not run afoul of public morals or compelling government interest, for example, the inoculation of children or uh worst feeling of poison snakes and things like that. In this case, the public's not being presented with any particular religion as a statement by the city. The object is a member of the public, not a fellow police officer. Poster is confined to the police department and is an expression of the police officer's source of their strength and courage to perform their duties. Police officer's prayer does not endorse any particular religion or denomination used in the word Lord. Does not directly reference Christianity, even though the word is most often used in Christian belief is comparable to Judaism, Buddhism, Islam or Hindu Hindu beliefs. Another word that's crafted as a source of ultimate belief enabling the officers to perform their duties and functions. With that, uh city manager rightly concluded, poster is not intended to offend you, you or others, but merely to convey the sentiment the officer is keeping in your heart. We will not be removed in the picture.
Amen for that.
He responded and is still not happy.
Well, we may see the A C L U or somebody like that will deal with that when we get it. C I O has had a provision of revising the M T C for about every ten years, all the way up to this year. Now all of a sudden, after about four years, we've got a new M T C. So this means for us, a lot of work of getting together with the officers. We go through a process of uh sitting down, not only the modernist officers, but also with the Black and Solange and Southport and so on. And kind of going through this and getting everybody's ideas of what the provisions we might or might not want in there. And there are some differences in the M T Cs, mountain traffic codes between them, just as all these do. For example, Southport, as you know, has a lot of A T B language in their M T C because they're right up against the national forest. So they want to be of access set, whereas most of the municipalities, um almost at modernism, they do not allow those in city streets. Uh, I heard a proposal the other day, some folks up there came with the Northwood and they wanted to uh have limited access to A T Bs. So we've been on work with us, have a look at that because they're a little bit like between uh Monty and Southport with more of the Monty size, I think, uh in order of keeping those off the city streets, so. Anyhow, most that's just one of the aspects that is different depending on where you are with the M T Cs. But to make long story short, we're gonna have to spend some time um coming through this. Fortunately, they've given us a deadline version that we can uh see what changes have been made there and that'll speed this up considerably. Uh, we sit down with P D to have some meetings and uh coming out with the brand new mountain traffic code. Um. The uh DJ and I are continuing our meetings uh on Lanius Code. There's a lot that still has to be covered on that. Um, very complex and uh uh should be working that. I'll be uh out of state for a week starting tomorrow. Seth will be here. I'll be available by phone. Um, hope to be back by next Thursday for planning mission meeting. My phone gets back into Denver at like eleven thirty, some stuff that I gotta get here. But so um just a note about upcoming events, the twenty first of May, Tuesday, C N L district meeting at Sky High. I believe it's will be.
Five?
Four thirty.
Five.
Five, five. Let's go at five.
It was five, five o'clock.
Hey there.
Um, May twenty seventh, uh Memorial Day celebration at the cemetery. We'll have a full color guard there. Uh, ten o'clock. Um. June the sixth, I think we've got the hearing then, um, yes, on the passage of the uh water export rules and regulations. And uh then our, that's our hearing on the road closure too at the same time. Um, and uh June the eighteenth to the twenty first is the C N L annual conference at the Loveland Hilton. Let's see, someone is there? Any questions?
Yeah.
Thank you, Tony. Sitting there.
First of all, the theater, it the current L C, or L C, no, we're not L C, the L C sort of is not interested in extending the sentence. And so that ends June the fourteenth. I talked to um Cindy and Rindel Wright. They're the owners of Bo Delicious Coffee and they would like to remain there. They have, we would turn over the all the utilities will go in their name and then be able to keep the coffee shop open. Uh, the I think that's a good easy way to kind of handle this. Get into this. I I'm gonna get a little bit of a loss as far as having, I can pull together a community group of individuals to discuss it, come back to you guys and say they want to keep it open and they will raise funds because I think our ultimate goal and my ultimate goal is to close the theater. Now, we did receive this week, it should go in the newspaper on made it from it. We received, we will be receiving a one million dollar grant from the E P A on Brownfield. Um, either Brownfield or anything. And what that does is it'll allow us to do the testing and remediation of asbestos in city buildings. It's covered for four years. We'll leave that long. So I think first on the list about together is um the theater, which I think then would ultimately help the next person who may want to take it. It will cover city hall and any other city uh buildings that we own. Then we can use the money as well to do the testing for private businesses. But the grant doesn't cover the remediation. We can just give an A B C business report that says, yes, you've got it and here it is or you don't. So I think that's going to be a real help for some of our downtown businesses and anybody looking at rehabilitation of some of our facilities. Oh, any more on that? Are we okay with proceeding with C D A Rindel to run the coffee shop? And so they know that that once remediation, the testing starts, that they will have to find another location. But this buys them some time. And so I'll have to work with Jean that we can come up with a separate lease for them to so we can understand who's covering what. My recommendation at this point is we don't charge them any rent. You're okay with that as long as they are covering the utilities.
Yeah, keep the utilities on, last on. Good.
The Moore Foundation is just making such a powerful impact on on the community. Um, the city will be the pass through on two grants that they have that they are giving out. And one is to the Chamber of Commerce to redo that whole corner of their the flower beds there and new sprinklers system. And so all of that will be ripped ripped out and it's supposed to be um done by the first part of July. And then
Yeah, I'll have to listen to that.
No, I thought I said, couldn't go ahead. And then they're being a sponsor for the golf course event. And then they're sponsors for our baking to the memorial park event. And and so that's that right now as far as the latest look what you want, because those dollars will all come to us and then we'll have to get it back out to to these entities. And then um the county contacted me and asked me if we would be the middle man for their conservation trust fund. Conservation trust funds have to go through a uh government entity. And so they want to give a hundred and forty thousand dollars to the golf course for their new project. So that money will come to us and then we'll just give it back to the golf course. That's all we need. Um, C N L for the dinner, if any of you guys are finding one attending, both Senator Simpson and Representative Cartina said that they would be there. So I think that will be a plus. The employees were doing a trash pickup on Wednesday, starting at eight, seven o'clock.
Seven.
Seven o'clock to eight thirty and then we'll have breakfast burritos after, so okay, so just don't have to do your real jobs, uh come on by and we're gonna be doing some of that. And then I wanted to tell you that we will, I did make a conditional office offer to a chief of police candidate. Senator Dill said yes, but we need to do the background check. Senator Dill said yes, but we need to do the background check and, um, look at some other logistics. So hopefully the next meeting we'll have an announcement and and maybe we'll start and that sort of thing. So I'm excited about that. Police department's doing great and working well and helping them, so it's great. And then I, our next meeting is June the sixth, so we don't have any, for two weeks, we don't have any friends. I'm leaving the country on May the twenty-eighth. And then I actually fly back in on June the sixth. So I don't know what I'll look like, but I will be here for me. Vacation. I'm gonna go on a Catholic pilgrimage to Major Gloria Bosnian.
Really?
So it was ten of us from the San Luis Valley going and then nine from other states. Then so we'll be one group and traveling together. So, got a lot of prayers from August.
Thank you. Thank you, G G. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Counsel, committee, city commissioner, and councilor de course. Counselor Lorenz? It's warming up, becoming nice, so, uh, keep an eye on your neighbors. Take care of what's going on. Pay attention to your surroundings. There's a lot of stuff going on and people aren't catching it, so. See something, say something. Do not be afraid to call again. Just use a non-emergency number and just keep calling again so they can get them yeah, what they need to do. With that, we will go with Monty Strong. We will adjourn this meeting until
June sixteenth?
Sixty AM. What happens?
June sixteen?
June sixth at sixteen.
G G's got a chance to get rested up?
It's like gonna be a hellstorm trying to get things so that I can get out of here. But everyone have a nice Memorial Day weekend too and go see with Jean and.